I'd like to call our City Council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll please.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver. Shower.
Here.
Seifert.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
We have a quorum. The next item is the questions, comments, and announcement portion of our meeting. These, your questions or comments can be of a general nature, and we added this portion of the meeting for those in the audience who don't feel they can last or wait to the end of the meeting, which is when we have our typical questions and comments. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on any item, please come forward. Then let's move on to the approval of minutes of August 19th. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Seifert. We have one typo to correct on page seven, the results of a vote on Resolution R 7813. It was five A's, I's, two nays, and zero absent. Any other comments, additions or deletions for the clerk? The roll please.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
I have two. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mary Florio from the 7100 block of Emerson had called me to express her gratitude with the prompt action that Mr. Gombach had taken in handling the restoration of the grass that had been dug up in her front yard by ComEd, and received a communication from Mr. Jack Quinert of the 7300 block of Summit emailing me over the weekend in regards to the brush pickup. It had been picked up as of Friday. I talked to Mr. Gombach, but it should be picked up by tomorrow.
It had to be extended because of the amount of brush put out.
Correct. That is correct, yes. Thank you, that's all I have.
Any other communications? I received two. I received a phone call from Charles Tucker, who identified himself as a Ward 1 resident, who voiced his objections to video gaming in the city. I also received an email from Felix Muzaki with the same objection to video gaming in the city of Darien, and I will present those for the record. Thank you. I believe we have, we had, we had a resident speak on this issue at a previous City Council meeting. I can't remember that individual's name, but these are the first, these are only two of the comments I've heard personally on the, on this issue. I don't know if any of the other aldermen have heard any of the comments personally.
I think there was one in Sylvia's ward.
Yeah.
That's who I'm thinking of, yes, yes.
Alderman MacIver had sent that to me, and she probably would have mentioned it if she was, if she were here, but any of those that the aldermen get, if you want to send those, we'll assemble those for goal setting when we talk about it.
Very good, okay. So please, to the residents of Darien, please feel free to, to let our, the alderman or myself or staff know your feelings on the issue of video gaming. Let's move to the mayor's report, and the only item I want to mention under the mayor's report is our upcoming first ever town hall meeting on September 26th. We will be holding this meeting at Carriage Greens from 7:00 to 9:00, and I am so pleased because all of the taxing bodies in the city of Darien are joining in this town hall meeting. We will have all the school districts, including the high schools, fire protection districts, library, park district, all of the taxing bodies will be participating in this town hall meeting. I will be the keynote speaker in which I will be giving a state-of-the-city presentation with questions from the audience and questions that are presented ahead of time to the City Council. All you need to do is register, and if you want to file any questions, you can go to, it's our website too, isn't it, that they can sign up, or is it just the Darien Chamber? It's a connection to, from ours, right?
It's the Darien Chamber website, but there's a connection to ours, I believe.
Right. All we're asking, we're asking that you identify, that you will be attending this meeting, and if you have any questions, if you want to ask them ahead of time, please present those then. At least I will have a heads up and be able to answer your questions as thoughtfully as possible. So we're really excited about this, and we're hoping that we have a great turnout from, from our Darien residents. This is a great opportunity for everyone to touch base with all of your elected officials, not just the city, but the school districts and every other taxing body, and this is really a great opportunity, so I hope, I hope you get involved. September 26th at Carriage Greens, 7:00 to 9:00. Thank you.
Free of charge?
Free of charge, thank you very much. That is a very important issue, that it is free of charge. Let's move on to the City Clerk's report.
No report this evening, Madam Mayor.
And let's move to the City Administrator's report.
I have no report also, Mayor.
Okay. Let's move to the department head information and our questions. Any of the department heads going to address the council?
No report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Chief?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to give an update, a brief update on the poll that was taken regarding the video gaming.
That's right, that's right. We were waiting for that.
We polled in additional seven municipalities to include the following. It was Berwyn, Bloomington, Brookfield, Cicero, Countryside, Danville, and Oaklawn. And of the seven polls, five responded, with Berwyn and Oaklawn not responding. Bloomington indicated that they had no increase in criminal activity, no calls, increase in calls for service or vehicle traffic, no influx of out-of-town residents, and the reception of the community had been favorable, and that the owners were compliant with the local ordinances relative to video gaming. The other four jurisdictions published very similarly documentation. Actually, there was one jurisdiction, Danville, that said the community initially objected, but had, despite the objections, it had been implemented, and there had been no further objections.
Just like us.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we voted not to allow video gaming in 2012, and at the request and discussion from a business owner, we reconsidered that, that decision. To be continued.
This is going, going to be an ongoing polling, and as more jurisdictions come online, we'll be following up every two or three months with a poll.
And all of these municipalities that you polled currently have video gaming in their town?
At least one video game. The, one of the last ones we polled only had one game that was at a gas station, and
At a gas station.
They had not seen any increased activity there, so.
Okay. So it's been for a few months that many of them have had this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the chief on that issue, or any issue? Let's move on then to the Treasurer's report. Treasurer Corrin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 131408 in the amount of $163,109.47 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended August 22nd in the amount of $257,492.23, for a total to be approved of $420,601.70.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny? Seconded by Alderman Belkey? Any questions for the Treasurer? The roll please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven I's, one absent.
The warrant has been approved, that they, do you want to go over the monthly report?
Okay. The revenue and expenditure report for the period ended July 31st, 2013, reflects the general fund year-to-date revenue $4,185,103, expenditures of $3,226,323, for a current balance of $2,729,788. Water fund year-to-date revenue $819,781, expenditures $965,098, current balance of $693,098. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue $133,416, expenditures $88,734, for a current balance of $337,391. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue $1710, expenditures $51,900, for a current balance $522,828. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue $31,6942, expenditures $1,454,535, for a current balance $5,373,504. And the capital projects debt service fund year-to-date revenue $256,193, expenditures $86,838, for a current balance of $177,216.
Any questions for the Treasurer on the monthly report? And as usual, you have your, our cash reserves report at the end of that. We are, the collateral in place is, exceeds all of the funds, all of our reserves?
Yes, by approximately $300,000. In addition to that, we have the $250,000 FDIC insurance over-rides, so we're cushioned to about $600,000.
Okay. Thank you. Standing committee reports? Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes of the August 5th Admin Finance Meeting has been submitted to the Clerk's office, and our next Admin Finance Meeting will be Monday, October 7th, in the upstairs meeting room at 6:00 PM.
Municipal Services?
Madam Mayor, I don't have my paperwork in front of me, so I can't give you those dates.
I have it. The meeting is scheduled for September the 23rd at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. And Police Committee, have they set a date for another meeting?
I believe it's 9/16.
Two weeks from yesterday.
September 16.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock.
Very good, thank you. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. Do any of the aldermen have any questions or comments on any of the items that are on the agenda this evening? God bless you. I'd appreciate it if you turn off your phones. It affects our communications here. Then let's move to the, to the audience, and does anyone in the audience want to address the City Council on any items that are on the agenda this evening? Then let's move right to old business, and there being no old business. We'll move to the consent agenda. We have quite a number of, of items on the consent agenda, and for the viewing audience, I'd like to read those items. The first item is a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the Class J Temporary Liquor License for Our Lady of Peace Home and School Association. Item B is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to the Darien zoning ordinance for 8691 Woodvale Drive. Item C is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use and variant, variation to the Darien zoning ordinance for the construction of a transmitting tower at our Municipal Services Department at 1041 South Frontage Road. The item D is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Associated Technical Services LTD for two FCS Model S30 Ultrasonic Leak Surveyor units in an amount not to exceed The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the County of DePage for a temporary easement at 7515 South Cass Avenue, which is our Heritage Plaza, for the 75th Street and Cass Avenue reconstruction project that is anticipated to start in 2014. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien, which includes vehicles, coach lights, and light poles. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Darien and the Darien Park District for the purchase of rock salt. Similar resolution, intergovernmental agreement between the city of Darien and Central Cass School District 66 for the purchase of rock salt. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposal from the Fields of Canton Farm, Inc., for the purchase and installation of 50/50 Parkway Tree Program and the planting of various Parkway trees in an amount not to exceed $28,795. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core Pro Companies for the removal and replacement of the cathodic protection system for our water plant at 67th Street and Wilmett Avenue in an amount not to exceed $22,500. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a quote from Advanced Automation and Controls, Inc., for a radio communication system in an amount not to exceed $19,660. Do I have a motion to approve all the items? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower? The roll please.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
Okay. I did not note the change in the, the fund that was being used for the, the payment of the cathodic protection system. That, that fund was changed. You made note of that in our work session? Oh, it wasn't brought up in our work session. Yes, it was, okay. That was, he changed the, the fund that that money was coming out of. And I have, yes. The account number, do you need that? It was for the Core Pro?
No, because it, it's not included in the, the title of the resolution.
So we don't worry about that?
It was in the agenda memo. It was informational purposes only, I believe.
Yeah, it was the typo error on that portion of it.
Okay, all right, good. Let's move to new business. The first item is motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use to the Darien zoning ordinance for an eating and drinking establishment for Dottie's Brookhaven Plaza, 7516 Cass Avenue. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Discussion. The roll please.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
The motion has been approved. Item B is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-8 of our Darien City Code, increasing the number of Class H liquor licenses from one to two. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion. The roll please.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
The motion has been approved. Item C is a motion...
Madam, I'm sorry, if we did not, you had asked me earlier, we did not include that in the, in the cover memo, but Zazo's is also doing some expansion, which I thought, you know, was a nice thing to go along. It's not just a liquor license addition, but actually taking up some more space there as part of a, you know, increase in business.
Our understanding is that Zazo's Pizza is, is looking at moving, moving into the space adjacent to their, their Zazo's Pizza on Route 83, in order to incorporate a restaurant bar as part of their business. So that, that is why we were just approving this liquor license H. Thank you. Item C is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-4 of our City Code, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses from eight to nine. This is for, which business is this for?
Dottie's.
Dottie's, okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Discussion. Yes?
I just wanted to bring that up, that we talked about this in the Admin Finance Meeting, and the, the question was raised again and answered that if the gaming doesn't go through, then Dottie's wouldn't fulfill the lease. So this is just one step that they need, and the gaming would be the second.
That was understood by the parties during that meeting. Any other discussion? The roll please.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
The motion has been approved. Item D is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-1 of the Darien City Code, increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses from 10 to 11. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny? Seconded by Alderman Shower? Alderman Marques?
Madam Mayor, this, this is for the, the tobacco, this probably should be noted, they're moving into a larger location as well.
They wouldn't be moving unless they had this approval. They still have to appear before your committee because they are, they have to apply for a building permit, and we'll be looking for plans on that, on that development. Any discussion, any other discussion? The roll please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
The motion has been approved. Item E, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty when I read this motion, because I don't think the city administrator is going to be constructing the tower.
I can guarantee that.
But item E is a motion to approve a resolution, authorizing the city administrator to approve the construction of a tower of up to 300 feet, or the most allowed by the FAA, on the property known as the Municipal Services Property, 1041 South Frontage Road, and to provide rental revenues and capital projects, which include rental revenues and capital projects for the city of Darien. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. The roll please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
I don't know if you want to discuss what kind of revenues we're looking at when we have such a, such a proposal from a company.
Yes, the, the total revenues that we would receive from this project, we already received $73,000 from this company in coordination with the previous project. In addition to that, we would receive $63,000 to help us put water main over to our Public Works Department, reconfigure parking over at the same property, and pave another area and put up a fence, which would allow us to store items that are moved over from that site. In addition, if we're able to get what we're getting at the current market for other tenants on that tower, we would get approximately $380,000 annually to...
And what is the, yeah, what is the name of this company that has made this proposal to us?
The name of the company is World Class Wireless.
Okay. All right. Item F, the next item on the agenda, is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of a T1 Training Use of Force Simulator. I guess it goes by the acronym Rule Tech, in the amount of $18,950. Do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion.
Madam Mayor, this, this item came to the Police Committee meeting, our last meeting, and at first I was, in the committee, I voted no, because it was an item that was over budget. I felt that we, the police had asked us for some equipment similar to this. Apparently, a grant was available, and the amount was originally something in the ballpark of $19,000. I approached the chief, asked him to get the number down below, talked to the vendor. They've got it down to this $18,950 that we're voting on this, this evening. I still am, you know, not comfortable voting for something that we're over budget on, because I think we're set of precedence, and I'm not, you know, too happy with it. However, the chief has assured me that he will find something in his budget to, you know, make up on that, so that's where I'm at with that.
Any other discussion on that item? The roll please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Six I's, one absent.
The motion has been approved. Let's go to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have announcements they'd like to make now? I guess we want to welcome everybody to Darien Fest this upcoming weekend. I know my granddaughter is so thrilled. She can't wait to get the amusement rides. I bet your children love it, too. But hopefully, we'll see everyone out there. Does anyone in the audience want to address the council?
I just have a question.
Do you want to come up to the microphone, please?
I own the property of Woodvale Drive, the one you guys approved, the fence for...
Excuse, yes, we want to get you on the record.
I own the property of Woodvale Drive, the one you guys approved, the fence for...
In your name?
My name is Tracy Beeman, and I live at 8691 Woodvale.
Okay.
My next step from here, do I need, still need to get a permit, or is this...
Dan?
Come on in tomorrow, and we'll get you a building permit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Dan, that would also be under the category of fees that are waived this year still?
Correct.
Yeah. Anyone else in the audience want to address the council? Then I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Belkey, seconded by Alderman Seifert. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I love it, I love it. Turning the microphones off, Art.
I hope we...
What's that? The audio. [beep]